The reason why I asked that question is, in 2010, the city of Coral Gables had an ordinance that prohibited all trucks, whether they were used for commercial or non-commercial, personal uses. And there was a citizen that challenged that ordinance on a number of grounds with respect to personal choice, you know, he should be able to use whatever type of vehicle he wants, and I think in that case he was, he had a pickup truck or something. So their ordinance prohibited all trucks, not like what we had. And he, and the guy that challenged it wanted to have an ordinance like ours. Well, the appellate court held that the prohibition of all trucks was constitutional, but was concerned that the prohibition of those that would be used for residential, I mean, personal purposes only would be then unconstitutional. And that was, that decision went up to the Florida Supreme Court. The Florida Supreme Court refused to accept jurisdiction on the certified question, so that, so that the, you know, the, the court wanted to know, the lower court wanted to know from the Florida Supreme Court, was it, would it have been constitutional for the city to change its ordinance like the way we've got it? And the court refused to accept jurisdiction. So we're stuck with, we're not stuck, this is, this is the law currently in Florida. And I'm just gonna read a couple of quotes real quick. It says, "The court said to base the constitutionality of the ordinances solely on whether a person uses his vehicle for personal or commercial purposes would create an irrational classification, lead to absurd results, and be impractical if not impossible to enforce." That's why the ordinances restrict the parking of all trailers, recreational vehicles and trucks in residential neighborhoods at night, not just those that would be used for recreational or commercial purposes. And so, instead of trying to tinker with an ordinance which might already be unconstitutional, we might start thinking about what the implications would be of changing our ordinance to be more consistent with that of Coral Gables, or leave the issue alone since nobody's really made an issue of it yet.
Rachel.
Being married to a contractor who drives a truck, I mean, it would be problematic for him not to be able to park his, I mean, it's his vehicle. It's his sole vehicle. It's his work vehicle, it's his personal vehicle. I mean, it's a Chevy Avalanche, it's not, it's not, that's still a truck. I mean, to say, "Not allowed?"
Right. And so advising the city council as to the various options that might be more practical and legal, I would suggest that instead of prohibiting them all, as the court would have, would suggest that we would do, I would suggest that you prohibit none.
So, in essence, our current, our current regulation does not indicate commercial? I thought we were not allowed to have commercial vehicles on our, an SRO property.
That is true. And the court would say, if it was challenged, that that would be unconstitutional, say that you can't have a commercial truck, pickup truck, because it's been, because it's used for commercial purposes, versus the same truck that's used for personal purposes. And we're talking about parking those trucks, personal or commercial, outside of garage during the specified, you know, overnight.
Yes.
Putting them in a garage would be fine, no matter what the use would be.
I drove a pickup truck to the meeting today. It's parked inside the garage at night, but, you know, it might not be some night. But the question I have is, we've also talked about lettering on trucks.
That's the commercial component, isn't it?
Yeah, there are- I guess for David, would we be allowed to restrict lettering on the vehicles? So that, you know, that typically is what you see?
Yeah.
Signage?
I mean, I know someone who commented, a resident who commented to me that they see someone, that a vehicle's parked outside, and during the day it has the magnet on it, but they remove the magnet so that it's, the cars, the vehicle's sitting outside at night, doesn't have the magnet on it, so it doesn't appear to be-
Commercial.
Commercial.
Right.
And then in the morning, the magnet goes back on and it's used during the day, and then it comes off at night, and, to be compliant. So, are we-
I think that's kinda why the court said that it's difficult to enforce the ordinance, because, you know, when you take the magnet off, it may, it may make it more difficult to detect that that's a commercial vehicle, but it still might be a commercial vehicle. And then, if you, if you simply try to avoid whether it's commercial or, or personal by describing the vehicle as to what is painted on it or otherwise put on it, you run afoul of potential First Amendment free speech grounds, because not everybody that has printing on their vehicle is, has it for commercial purposes, but may have it for political or other purposes.
First, Kim.
Okay, so, we're just talking about the special residential areas. And this would be part of your deed restricted community, right? Isn't this part of when you were talking about-
The deeds are no longer enforceable?
They're in the codes. They're all codified now.
Well, actually, Burnsthor Ile still has deed restrictions, and so does-
Well, PGI.
And so does Burnsthor Meadows.
Talking about PGI.
Okay, well, I guess, I have nothing to say.
Okay. Ray, do you have a comment?
Ray Rose, Representative, Pontagorda Civic Association, for God's sake, leave the issue alone. It worked very well in the Isles. You can have any vehi, any, I think it's up to one-ton truck, so long its sign is removed at night and you place it in the daytime, and it's been this way forever, and we've not had any problems, it's been enforced. But please don't stir the pot.
Well, and I, my concern would be, commercial trucks that actually are piled on with ladders and coolers-
That's clearly defined.
Pardon?
Those are clearly prohibited.
Well, I'm not sure now. Are those prohibited in terms of our ordinance?
Yes. David's saying we, they are, but he's saying we shouldn't.
We shouldn't. And I can't, I can't abide by something like this being left all over our community.
If we just leave it alone, we're fine.
Yeah, that's what he's telling us, just leave it alone.
Exactly.
Okay. Next. Next. Are we okay with that? We'll leave it alone?
Okay with that.
Alrighty. Okay, we will now move back to our second readings. And we have a public hearing.
And this is a second public hearing-
Actually, you know, before we begin that, I'm gonna need a break. Do a five-minute break, is that all right?
Sure.
Okay. Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Next is an ordinance without a public hearing required. This is the second reading of ZA-03-15, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the city of Pontagorda, Florida, amending Chapter 26 of the Pontagorda Code, known as the Land Development Regulations, Article 11, Sign Standards, Section 11.8, Signs in Rights of Way, Subsection C, Special Event Signs Providing a Process for Application, Review, and Approval of Off-Premises Special Event Signage. Amending Article 13, Events, Section 13.4, Special Events Providing for Definitions and a Process for Special Events to Reflect Regulations Adopted in the Event Manual by Resolution Number 3124-14 Providing for Conflict and Severability and Providing an Effective Date.
Does anybody-
Move approval of ZA-03-15.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is ZA-04-15, the second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the city of Pontagorda, Florida, amending Chapter 26, Pontagorda Code, known as the Land Development Regulations, amending Article 3, Regulating Districts, Section 3.9, CC, Center, City Center District, adding a new subsection H, Decorative Exterior Lighting Standards Providing Specific Criteria and Permit Requirements for Decorative Exterior Lighting, amending Article 11, Sign Standards, Subsection 11.6B, Prohibited Signs and Devices to Allow Exemption from Prohibition for Any Exterior Illuminated Tubing or Strings of Lights for Properties Located in the City Center Zoning District Providing for Conflict and Severability and Providing an Effective Date.
Move approval?
Second.
Everyone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, is ZA-05-15, which is the second reading of an ordinance, that I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the city of Pontagorda, Florida, amending Chapter 26, Pontagorda Code, known as the Land Development Regulations, amending Article 3, Regulating Districts, Section 3.13, SRO, Special Residential Overlay District, amending subsection L, Storage of Vehicles and Watercraft Providing Clarification for Watercraft Storage on Davits Providing for Conflict and Severability and Providing an Effective Date.
Move approval, ZA-05-15.
Second.
I'm sorry, by way of correction, I think I did this the last time as well. That's not L, but subsection 1.
Oh, okay. Move approval, ZA-05-15 with the change to the number 1.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, ZA-05-15. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, thank you. That was done very nicely. We now move into our consent agenda, and we have citizens' comments on consent agenda items.
Terry, I'm reading my draft here. I'm going back to that ZA-05-
15.
15. And my draft doesn't have a change in 1, but has a change in 2. Can you re, just? I think it's, I think it's paragraph 2 that we need to approve.
Yeah, we corrected it and moved to be word only.
The title says 1, and, and my draft says, identifies number 2 as being changed, which is-
Well, it's actually subsection L, Storage of Vehicles and Watercraft.
I got it, I'm sorry, my fault, it was L.
It is L.
So it's, it's all, it's all good.
Okay, so we're, we're good? Okay, sounds good. All right, so now we're moving into consent agenda. Is there any comments from the citizens on consent agenda items?
Move approval of a consent agenda?
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, so we did, got through regular agenda, now we have recommendations from the city officers. City manager?
April 21st, we had a scheduled joint meeting with the county commission. They have come back and said they may want to postpone that. There are items that we have proposed that they may not be ready to address, and actually, we may not be ready to address one of them. I'd like to see if there are some items you may want to take off the joint meeting. One of them is the railroad crossing at 41 and Jones' Loop Road, Burnsthor. We did have a, an update back from the county on that particular project. The railroad is going to, once they adopt the contract, they will do the work, and the county will reimburse them. Do we need to have that on the joint? No?
No.
Okay. City attorney, David, you wanna give an update on mining?
Yeah, I met with Swift Mudd's Public Records Person, I guess it was a, it'd be a week ago. They're preparing the documents that I found in their records. Once I receive those, I'll be, then be able to review both the county's permits and the state's permits, and give you an assessment of whether or not they're adequate to protect our watershed.
Okay.
So I, I thought I was gonna get them back by last Friday. It's a lot of stuff that they're doing for, so I would expect I'll get them next week.
All right, so without that, obviously, this is an issue of concern for the commission. They don't want to-
Right.
-have a conflict with us on this. Do we wanna take it off the list, or do we-
I'm sorry, when was, when is that joint meeting?
April 21st.
Yeah, I, in my discussion with them, I was anticipating that I would be able to have some sort of, something to report to you before that meeting, so it's your pleasure. If you wanna keep it on, it's fine. If you want to take it off, it's fine.
Well, the interesting thing is, they need, the county has a requirement on their advertising. They need to have our information by April 10th. I don't think we'll have it then.
I can't guarantee that, since I'm, I don't have control of when I'm gonna receive those documents.
That's the point.
Okay. So, the question is, is they will postpone the meeting if that continues to be on the list? And is it more important for us to meet without that item?
I think that's a pretty important issue. I mean, if we don't have a resolution, I would hate to have a joint meeting now, and then we're left kind of hanging out there with, with no way to really hash it out if it, if it does start to get more involved than what it is now. So maybe a post, I mean, I'm not, I would like to have the meeting, but-
The other, excuse me, I'm sorry. I was just gonna ask, the other items on the list, are there any others that they have a problem with?
Well, they're not ready yet with the South County overlay, because of the last meeting they had.
So that's another issue that we're very concerned about. Yes, Tom?
With regard to the South County overlay, before we, we meet, we have a conversation with them, I believe that we might wanna entertain a staff, a county staff presentation here, the city council, where they are, where they perceive they are with their commissioners, and explain that to us, so we may be better prepared to have a conversation with them on what, what we feel is the bottom line with regards to an overlay. So I would like to move that we, that we have that.
So, I guess what we're saying is, we're okay about postponing the meeting? Kim?
Yeah, what is, what's left?
Flood mapping update, which our staff can provide to us at any time.
Mm-hmm.
A library update, I guess I could ask the county administrator for a library update, and they can provide it to us. The Vietnam Wall project, we were gonna provide them an update. Courthouse expansion.
And that's another issue that, when, when will they be opening the bids for the housing authority?
Lorraine? When, when do the bids open? When we're gonna do-
We haven't set a date yet.
Could I, could I please ask you to go to the microphone?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Lorraine Helber, Pontagorda Housing Authority. The housing authority hasn't received approval from HUD yet on the proposed bid price. As soon as we get that, the board will address the process and set a date for accepting and opening bids.
Do you have bids currently?
No, we do not have bids yet. We haven't asked for bids yet.
I see. Okay, okay.
They, they got bids.
We have interest.
They had bids, but then they couldn't take them. So those people may choose not to rebid.
We have, we had offers and realized through HUD that we could not negotiate those offers. We had to have a public bid process and set a minimum price. And that's what we're waiting from HUD to approve, is that minimum price.
I see. Okay. So that's still on hold as well?
So, I guess, maybe, we were gonna get an update on impact, but it hasn't been anything. Maybe I'll, I should communicate to the county administrator that maybe we should postpone it then.
But that these are still our issues?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not, they're not-
But I'm going away.
Yeah, they're not going away, they're still there.
The only issue that came off is the railroad crossing.
Did they have any items for us?
No, we're, we're usually the ones that-
Well, and I would say that, you know, with the overlay, I'm concerned that they're going, they've gotten some input from a few people, and now that it's, this has been going on for so many years, and, you know, it's, it's our opportunity to really talk about this and encourage them to really take a stand.
Well, that's why I'd like to have, I'd like to hear from their staff, where they are vis-à-vis their commission, so we have, we can discuss it here, and then have a conversation with them.
I like that idea.
That's okay, I'm good with that.
Can we-
I will convey that we're okay with postponing it, and I will convey that we'd like to schedule a, an agenda item for their staff to come and talk about the overlay.
And then you'll get us a flood mapping update from our staff.
Our staff's going to schedule it for the first meeting in May.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good.
Okay, okay. Good with that? Alrighty.
Okay.
All right, city attorney?
Yeah, I've got about a half hour's worth of record. April Fools.
Our city clerk?
Yes, under boards and committees, we continue to have two vacancies on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board for alternates. We have two three-year terms on the Utility Advisory Board. And we have one unexpired term as a regular member on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board. And last, under vacancies, there are two four-year terms on the Pontagorda Housing Authority.
Can we nominate and appoint those? I mean, aren't the two that are coming off-
The housing authority, we're just announcing the vacancy, but if we don't get any additional applicants, you could do that when we do nominations, yes.
Okay.
Under nominations, we have two unexpired terms on the Utility Advisory Board, and we do have two eligible applicants for nomination. They could be appointed at this time.
Nominate and appoint Mr. Fenneren and Mr. McClary? No, no.
That's Jim Clary.
Wait, am I on the right thing?
Yes.
Yes, so I'm appointing Mr. Fenneren and Mr. McClary to the nominating and-
And appointing.
Appointing them to the Utility Advisory Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to nominate and appoint both of those gentlemen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And last, under nominations, we have a two-year term on the Firefighters Pension Board. We have two eligible applicants for nomination for one seat.
Nominate?
Nominate on second.
Both are nominated. Okay.
And that's all I have?
Okay. Moving along then. Policy and legislation, I guess I have just two things, one hopefully very quickly, but in the past, the Downtown Merchants Association had recommended to provide signage for the projects that are being paid for by the 1% sales tax. They suggest now, the county has great big huge signs, and I don't think we want any large sign, but do we want any kind of signage indicating as the projects are being done, such as the streetscaping, or the harbor walk, or whatever it is, that this particular project is being supported by the 1% sales tax?
I don't think so.
There's so many.
I'm inclined not to. I think that residents were critical of the county of using county funds to pay for signage like that.
Okay. So-
I agree.
Yeah, okay, so if the Downtown Merchants, when, you usually meet with them, don't you?
They were cautioned.
They were cautioned about?
The suggestion.
Okay. Okay.
I'll caution them again.
Not, well, you can let them know that, that it's been consensus of the council not to, okay. I just wanted to mention that, you know, in addition to the wonderful pedal and play event that happened this past Saturday, they also had the inaugural Chocolate Fantasia 7K run. And this was done by Sherri Lennon Kemp, who's the owner of The Foot Landing at Harold Court Center. She has a foundation, 123 Foundation, which supports charities, local charities, and this one was for Tender Hearts Partnership. And the Tender Hearts Partnership is for adults, basically, with disabilities, and who have an opportunity then to socialize. And so the funds go for parties and dances and things like that, where they can get together. So it was a wonderful kind of event, and they had over 300 runners.
Oh, yeah. She always has a big crowd.
So it's, it was a very, very, very nice thing, I just wanted to mention that. Nancy, do you have a-
I do. I had a resident ask about the nature park and what, you know, that we have, don't allow dogs in the nature park. And Joan looked into the management plan and could not find any problem with allow, if we were to allow dogs in the nature park, that it did not conflict with the management plan per the guidelines from the grant, the environmental grant. So, it's one of those things I wanted to bring it up, to find if they would be interested in discussing reconsidering allowing dogs there. We could, would have to put the, what do you call those?
Doggy waste stations.
Waste stations there, but I think it's, as this resident pointed out, it might encourage more people to make use of the nature park.
Well, I think the last time, I think the only hesitation that all of us had was the concern that Joan had with that, with it being-
I, I think we knew at that point in time.
That's right.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem with it.
As, as long as the owners, you know, pick up after the, the dogs, it's, it's fine, you know, the, the green thumbs are over there, they're walking all over the place, and we would, we would hear them loud and clear if that didn't happen.
That's right.
So do we need to, yes, they would, and I would, I would agree with the green thumbs, PGI green thumbs, if people aren't picking up after their pets.
And they have, you know, people should do that, really. Please do that.
So, I don't know, we all agree, Howard, what do we do next?
We will arra, we will amend the, I don't know if it's a resolution or ordinance, whatever it is, Mikhail probably hasn't done it by now.
Okay. Awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Kim?
No, I was gonna tell you about my visit to Newtown, and there'll be more information forthcoming for that, but-
How, how can we encourage the neighborhood groups to get together and really-
Well, I think they got encouraged. The, the people who attended the meeting, I think, heard loud and clear from the community. There were a lot of people there from the community that-
I saw the list.
Right, that actually, and there were more than just was on the list. They had a great big room, like this size, with tables all around, and the community group said to them, "You need to have, do you have an association?" And of course, they don't, really, and they said-
About four of them.
Right, but they said, "You need to form one, because you need, your city can't help you if they don't know what you want." So it, they have to, so they heard that, they're going to do it. I know they talked with Don McCormick today about getting some, you know, documentation so that they can form that. And they have always tried to get a consensus. And basically, they said to them, "Form the group. You can't get everyone to agree, so what are you, not gonna do anything?" When you see what they accomplished, and a lot of the thinking about, oh, crime and all that kinda stuff, people think, oh, it was just totally blown out of the water there, because they have, they have a big garden, they have Janey's Garden, they have another big community garden, and around the garden, they're just taking over more and more property to create parks for the kids, so when the parents are gardening, and it's just a continuing thing. And also, it was like, you know, the city doesn't have the funds to fund all this, so if you join together, there are other opportunities, there are other grants, there are other things out there. And they're just so open and welcoming, and said, "Please invite us to your city," which I would love to do, "so we can see what you have." We have a lot of the elements, so obviously, they're much bigger than we are. We went to their 44,000-square-foot youth center that they have there, their rec center, and they showed us everything that they had in there. And it was wonderful, and it was active, and there were people, just, it was everywhere we went. It was lots of people, everyone working together, and they have a great model. And like they said, they went around, this was 20 years in the making, and they went around and visited Tampa and all of these other places, and took the best that they, you know, in their opinion, the best, and they put it together, and they have worked really hard to do what they've done. And it's a real active community. I mean, I was so, I hadn't been there in, you know, 25 years, I was in, like they said, you would have never gone to that community before. And now, it's just amazing. Businesses, not, you know, everything that they were saying, opening business, entrepreneurial stuff, everything that was happening, we only have a small area. We could, we can ace that, you know?
That's great. That's great. Thank you, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, it was very nice.
Thank you for the enthusiasm.
Yeah, it was great.
Yeah, that's great. Tom?
Yes, the Vietnam Memorial Wall took a bit of a setback, and at the original quotation of the original contractor that quoted the wall, the salesman left the company, and they are having a difficult time contacting the company and verifying whether or not that quote will still hold.
My goodness.
In the meanwhile, they have contacted, Rick Tuss of Charlotte Memorial Cemetery has a contact with another granite manufacturer, and they originally quoted the project, but they were high in the beginning, but they've since taken a look at their estimate, and they are getting very close to what the original price was there. I think there may be about a 20 or $25,000 difference, which is significant, but we don't know the outcome yet, so it's still, it's a work in progress. And I'll have more information, well, as soon as I get it, I'll pass it on to you. And there was another issue that came up, about some other organizations out collecting funds on behalf of the Vietnam War. We, we don't know whether that really happened or not, but I've had a conversation with General Carr about it. He is looking into it, and we'll have some more information on that by the next meeting, if not sooner.
So, there were people collecting money who were not actually contributing?
It may, that has not been, there's a rumor out there, it hasn't, not been verified. We, and General Carr is looking into it and meeting with the appropriate people, so we will find out what's going on.
Okay. Citizens comments.
Ray Rose again, speaking personally. On the dog park, dogs in the nature park, I would strongly urge you to reconsider. And I'll permit dogs on the trails in the undeveloped portions of the park, but not in the area where the topiaries are and all the gardens and the seasonal plants because dogs urinating on those is going to kill it off and there's tremendous work and beauty in that area. And that really isn't suitable for dogs or other animals. So I'd ask you to reconsider, you can have all the rest of the park, but not that particular area, restrict that one area from pets.
I, excuse me, but I thought that the approval was going for the pathway. The nature park.
Well, I didn't distinguish between the two. I think that it was just allowing dogs in the park, but it could be restricted to the pathway and
I mean, I was thinking it was for, you know, to walk their dogs and that's why there would be the.
That would be what I would consider as well.
Would that be, I mean, that was my perception, so.
I don't have a dog, I don't have a dog in this fight. So I guess I would really like to hear from some pet owners that would say, well, what would you think? You have a dog?
Well, I have a dog. I mean, I agree with Ray. I mean, I don't let my dog urinate on plants like that. I mean, so you have to, you know, you have to be careful with that. I'm not, I haven't been there where he's talking about, so.
It's gorgeous.
It's.
What is, lovely.
But, you know, dogs are going to walk on either side of the sidewalk, that's just what, I mean, you don't want dogs going on the sidewalk.
Yeah, that's.
You want them in the grass, so.
Nature Park has a, they don't have a sidewalk per se, they have a
Path.
A pathway.
Okay.
In the harbor walk, we only allow dogs on the harbor walk.
Right.
Or that little area
Right.
Right by it. So in the resolution or ordinance, we can say, nature park pathway.
Thank you. That's what I, my perception was, so when you, when you mentioned that, I didn't even think about them in the park itself.
That would have worked.
Yes, sir.
Jean Polowski, a citizen, is a safety professional. Just talked to Mark out in the hall and to Rick. And the problem that you have isn't being addressed. And that is Maud and Marion is what we call a pinch point. Okay? You have congested all of your traffic into one point. Okay? You already have the ability to relieve that point. And that is, once you're going west on Marion and you cross the creek, you can turn into the parking lot for Fisherman's Village there. There's two entrances there. And by placement of the sign before the bridge on Marion Avenue, Fisherman's Village Parking to the right and not going to Maud because the general public is going to abide by the signs because they're looking. They're coming from everywhere in Florida, okay, to do this. The same thing pertains to the Visual Arts Center. If you were able to create a driveway into the Visual Arts Center right off of Marion, instead of going to Maud, you could relieve pressure there. So what you're doing is flowing the people in, right into the parking lots of Fisherman's Village and into Visual Arts Center, which relieves that intersection up there where people are crossing. So by reduction of volume, you're accomplishing what you want to do, okay? And you can make it better. You're never going to relieve, do the problem there unless you get to stoplights and all kinds of other problems that you have. But you certainly can do that. That calls for maybe trimming back the shrubs a little bit when you come across that bridge to the right and perhaps spending a few dollars to, as Rick said, well, we could do a turn lane there to the right and maybe one to the left into the Visual Arts Center.
Visual Arts Center has no parking, I mean, their building goes right up to the other building. There's no pathway to go around.
Well, they have a green spot on the Maud side, I've stood in that spot.
That's mostly swamp.
Yeah. You may have to put some fill in there, but, or you have to put culverts in or whatever it is to accomplish that. But you have to solve the problem that all of the traffic volume going to those two places goes through one intersection.
Thank you. Thank you, Jean.
Steve Fagan again. Just a quick, you know, we, at the last council meeting, people were talking about the dogs and Gilchrist Park and the problems. Last Friday, I had an opportunity, I was waiting, meeting somebody down there, so I sat for about an hour, little, quite an hour, waiting for them. And I watched the people walking, there were people walking, there were dog walkers, there were bicyclers. Everybody seemed to be playing nice, so it really works. I don't think there was a big problem. Just a side note, lady talked this morning about the donors program. And just to give you, my grandson, a couple of years ago, got killed in a car accident. We got notice that 36 individuals benefited from his donation.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is William Carroll, I'm a new resident to the area over here. And I wanted to talk about code compliance and some codes that are not generally common knowledge for new residents and how you address those things. If I could, may I give you some paper over here? I can give you my copy when I'm all done. Anyway, just a quick thing over here, as a new resident over here, I came into the community, I moved in and my first day here full-time, I put up a dog pen in my backyard. I reviewed the court, Community Center guidelines and when I did, it talked, it talked about fencing. So what I did, didn't say anything about fencing being permanent. It didn't say anything about fencing other than certain grades. So I put up a dog pen that you can buy over Lowe's in my backyard. I got a compliance complaint over here from an anonymous complaint and it said that I had a courtesy notice for an unpermitted fence. Nowhere in the coding does it say you need to have a permit for the fencing, number one. Number two is code compliance, when it talks about the overview of code compliance, it talks about education. In that education, the rules and guidelines should be clearly specified, which they aren't done. It also talks about the code compliance officer saying that it was an anonymous call. For a new member in the community, I don't feel that generates a community spirit. If somebody has a complaint, they should take it to the individual in person or they should leave their name and their phone number. This creates animosity in the community. I came from a small town in Nebraska. Everybody knew my name, everybody knew who I was. I'm not familiar with your types of rules and regulations over here and I understand policing ourselves is a good idea, but I don't appreciate the sense of community that's presented to me on my first day here and the way the community treated me in this matter. The code compliance officer sent me some rules and guidelines over here. First thing they told me, the fencing needed to have a permit. When I looked at the permit guidelines, that's where it talks about it being a permanent structure with posts. Nowhere in the general guidelines does it say that. Also, nowhere in the general guidelines does it say you need to have a permit for a fence. Okay? In this letter I gave to you, I put in there also temporary structures and it talks about temporary structures being prohibited. Nowhere does it say anything about fencing having to be a permanent structure. This is a dog pen. You buy him at Lowe's. What's the big deal? All I want to do is for my dog to have a place for the outside because he's an outside dog and he loves outside time. You want me to put in a $4,000 fence compliant with your regulations so my dog can have outside time without even giving me the proper courtesy of the rules and the regulations in advance? When I bought my property, it was listed as fee simple, not deed restricted. Fee simple means I have the right to do what I want with my property.
Mr. Carroll, I'm sorry that you are having these difficulties and particularly the non-neighborly complaint process. Where do you live?
I live right on the address over here, 2509 Padre Island Drive.
Is that, is that PGI?
It's PGI.
It's PGI, so that is.
And we talked to the PGI Community Center and they told us that there was no, that there was no HOA anymore, that the HOA was abolished and that the guidelines from the HOA transferred to the city for enforcement.
Right. As, as code.
Right, and the guidelines that they handed me did not say anything about permits. They also did not say anything about permanent structures or fencing having to be permanent. As a matter of fact, the code enforcement officer said, all you have to do is pay the $100 for the code, for the permit, you're fine. But then I saw the permit application and it talked about all the restrictions. So even the code enforcement officer told me all I had to do is apply for the permit, it would be fine, but the permit has much more restrictions than the code has listed on it. It doesn't.
Obviously, there, there needs to be modifications and changes to the.
Right, so when I talk about code compliance and a neighborhood spirit over here, my concern is, I wasn't treated laborly, number one. Information was not properly forthright given, number two. And number three is, people should be allowed to have a dog pen in their backyard. I don't understand why they can't. And so one of the proposals I have is to allow for temporary structures like a dog pen in the backyard, restricted by size and maintenance. Let people have a dog pen instead of having to put in a full grounded fence with two-foot posts in it for an area to contain your dog so your dog can run around in the backyard. It's not taking up the whole yard, it's taking up a small space, 20 by 25 feet.
Yes, Kim?
I mean, isn't part of, part of that theory, the hurricane and having a, you know, a structure in your yard that could possibly be?
This is Punta Gorda Isles, Special Residential Overlay District. They have, just like Bernstein Isles, just like, they have different restrictions. So the question becomes, does this city council want staff to go in front of the land development committee to see if they want to relax some of these restrictions?
I don't think that the land development regulation committee will, will do that, to tell you the truth, but I don't know. What is your?
I haven't seen the fence or the, I mean, I don't know.
I don't know what it looks like. I don't know.
It's a dog pen.
It's just, it's just cyclone fencing, you know? It's framed.
I don't know what that is.
Okay. Chain link fence, it's chain link fence and it's framed, you get them in panels. You buy them in six-foot, there you go, you buy them in.
I have to.
That's my, that's, that's my yard.
I, I have to.
They have the picture of my yard. So it's chain link, it's framed, it's attached by, by joints, okay? It doesn't have permanent mounting, mounting in over there. And the panels are sold in six-foot, eight-foot and 10-foot panels. And I chose this design in a circular fashion and I also chose it so it wouldn't affect the dog, the people over there in the golf course, which are way behind me. So I put it on the side of the yard, which A, gives him more shading and B, it keeps him away from the golfers at the 13th hole of the ladies tee over there because if I fence in my whole yard, he's going to be disturbing all the golfers over there on the 13th hole for the ladies tee. And, and so this to me is the most user-friendly option to be neighborly and to be in full compliance with your ordinances. That doesn't, the fencing does not permit a, prohibit a temporary structure, it does not.
Yes, but chain link fence is not permitted in the, in the overlay districts.
And, and I wasn't aware of that, number one. Number two is, I understand that's for aesthetic reasons, they're worried about rust. This is a temporary structure. And as a temporary structure, it can be taken down, it can be painted, it can be sprayed. There's a lot of things that can be done to be well-maintained and still be compliant. The nylon, the nylon fencing restriction is something I feel is absurd. It's, it's totally absurd to have somebody have nylon, nylon covering on their fencing. First of all, dogs chew on that and when they chew on it, that's a carcinogen. And that is not healthy for a dog.
I don't, well, I'm not going to speak to this, I'd like our city attorney to address this.
Well, this, the dog pen could possibly have been acceptable in other areas of the city, but not within the special overlay district. I understand, you know, when you say that you weren't aware of the restrictions and there are many restrictions in our code that I'm not familiar with either, but it's there for us to look at. And, you know, I hate saying it, but ignorance of the law is no defense and everyone's presumed to know what.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not have a problem with ignorance of law. I'm saying, as a new resident of the community, I am asking for variation from these rules because I feel the rule is ludicrous to not allow a chain link fence into, into the community and not allow a temporary structure in the community. These were carryovers from the HOA that are, as you're calling an overlay, that a new owner was not handed these rules and guidelines over here as a new owner. And again, my deed says fee simple, it does not say deed restricted.
I would, I would expect that even in Nebraska, they have zoning regulations that address things such as aesthetics and.
We can put up agricultural fencing, we can do anything we want.
Well, then this is not an agricultural area.
I understand that.
God is no different than most of the other communities that you'll come across. And, you know, I don't know that, that when the code enforcement folks came to you, I think what they did was they basically notified you that you were in violation.
Yes, they were.
And gave you an opportunity to come into compliance before any type of punitive action was.
Absolutely, absolutely. That, that was, that was foremost, it was a courtesy complaint, that was 100% correct. It was a courtesy complaint.
And that's our ability to be friendly and neighborly and inform you of the laws. And the only thing that didn't happen here is that you would, is that you did not inform yourself of the law before you spent the money to buy this material. And I'm sorry for that, but you can certainly ask the city council to amend the ordinance.
Which is what I'm doing and I have to be having this placed on the agenda in advance.
And I think what the city, and in order to amend the ordinance, it has to be done by way of a public hearing advertised and go through the planning commission and get all kinds of stuff. And I think what the council has simply told you based on their experience and since they're the ones that ultimately are going to be voting on this, that this is probably dead from the start because it's in the overlay district.
Okay, and that's fine, but I'm just, again, read the last page over here which says, Chapter 26, Article 8, Section 8.5. If you read that in the whole highlighted area, show me where it says it has to be a permanent structure. It doesn't say that. But in your fencing permit application, it says it has to be two-foot deep mounted permanent structure. Ignorance of the law is one thing, contradictions in the law are another.
Okay, I would not consider, I would not consider.
This came from the code enforcement officer.
This, this is not necessarily a fence, what this is, is a, it's a structure, as you've described it, as a dog pen.
It's a dog pen.
And in, and, and so it is either a permanent or temporary structure, either, either one of which has and is regulated in the special overlay district. Look, we've, we've had, we've had an ordinance adopted, if I recall correctly, pursuant to request of the folks in the special overlay district to prohibit above-ground swimming pools. I'm guessing that's probably quite common in Nebraska and it's probably quite common elsewhere in our area, but not within the special overlay district. That word special should have brought something to your attention to find out, why is this special? And how is that going to affect my property? I'm sorry that you didn't do the due diligence that you probably should have needed to do to find out if that property would allow for a dog fence. But, but fee simple means that the title is without restrictions, not that the property isn't subject to appropriate zoning.
No, I understand the city code.
Excuse me, sir, we have, yes.
Mr. Carroll, I am sorry that you've had, this is, you know, that you're feeling that we're unfriendly because I'll tell you, you're welcome with open arms and we're a very, very friendly community. But your, what you have here, I don't think will be allowed in any neighborhood that we have, even, even downtown. I mean, it's. I mean, it's, it's just not gonna, it's just not gonna fly.
Okay, and that's fine.
Did you have something, excuse me?
Yeah, I, I was going to say the same thing to Mr. Carroll, that I would welcome you, I'm sorry that your, your initial...
This way.
...day here in Punta Gorda was not as pleasant as it possibly could be, because this is a really, a community with a heart. But living in the special residential overlay myself, I know my neighbors would have a fit if somebody put a fence like this in the backyard.
I've talked to my neighbors, they don't have a problem with it. They, they think, they, 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 they didn't, they thought it was ridiculous that it got tagged, and I literally have talked to my neighbors.
The guidelines are there for a reason, and...
So I'd like to propose, I would like to propose, A, to sit there and allow for regulation changes, to allow for temporary fencing, number one. Number two, if you're going to restrict from temporary fencing, to put that in your statute that you have identified over here, is at the highlighted page, where it addresses, "Chapter Twenty-Six, Article Eight, Section Eight Point Five,"
And you make a very...
Where it says it must be permitted, and it must be a permanent structure. It does not say that here.
You've made a very good point, Mr. Carroll, Tom?
Yeah, Mr. Carroll, in an effort to be constructive here, there is a company located here in, in Punta Gorda that sells a product called invisible fencing, and it's used exactly for an application, I think it's used in application for exactly what you're outlining here. You can take a section of your yard and put this, and I don't know the technical details, but it's an invisible fence, and your dog could probably be in there, you, you wouldn't even see the wiring, or whatever it may be, that may be something that you might want to look into.
I will, and I'll look into that. My concern about putting permanence into there is, of course, when everybody has underground sprinklers, somebody can sit there and puncture your underground sprinkler system by sinking holes, and it'd be an irresponsible, and a fencing company to going across your sprinkler lines and creating damage.
I think Councilmember Kavanaugh is recommending a different type of thing, that, an invisible...
An underground.
No, it's not, well, it's a...
Transmitter, you're talking about the transmitter type, there's two types, there's one that goes underground, where you dig a line underground, and there's one that has a transmitter base...
I'm not sure.
Which has a circular, which has a radius.
And I'm not sure what the options are, unfortunately, I don't have a pet. But I think you've made some very good points with regards to what we have in our ordinances, and I know that our, our legal person here, who, who does all of our code enforcement activities, was taking that into account, and I anticipate we'll have modifications coming forward to clarify.
Just one question I have, did you, did you have a realtor?
Yes.
Okay, that might be something that we need to get out to them, because what you were told, what I was hearing anyway, is what you were told in the beginning, most of our realtors, could I ask who it was?
It was, I'd rather not say right now, but it's, it's a matter of public record, but...
It doesn't matter, I just...
Did you ask them if they could, if you could have that particular type of structure, when you, when you were talking to her about, or him or her about the property?
No, all he told me was that PGI was, at one point in time, an HOA deed-restricted community, the HOA was disbanded, and it was no longer deed-restricted. I took the due diligence and went to the community center, to join the community center, and in doing so, I was given a list of the same rules that you sent me. Again, they don't correspond to the regulations for the applications. So what they gave me still does not comply with saying you need to have a fence, a permit, and that it needs to be a permanent structure, and that permanent, that temporary structures are prohibited. It doesn't say that anywhere, and that's my guideline.
And that's what I'm saying, I thank you, because that, that is what we will have to fix. And I apologize to you on behalf of our council and our staff, that, that wasn't in there.
And I had to wait four, I had to wait four and a half hours to get my say, I asked to have this on the agenda, I put an email out to all the council members last week, not one council member addressed my email, not one council member said it will or will not be placed on the agenda. And I want that to put, be put on public record also, that I tried to get this on the agenda, I had to wait four and a half hours to have my little say over here, and not one city council member addressed my email.
Apologize for that too, sir.
That does not, again, sense, sense, I've served on airport boards, I'm an international airline pilot, I've served on church committees, I've served in the public. And, and I don't think that the city council did me justice by not answering my complaint, by not putting it on the email, and making me wait four and a half hours to address my concern.
Well, the other thing, sir, is you could have checked, in terms of just looking at our agenda, to see whether it's on, there are a lot of people who ask for things to be put on an agenda, but they may be a month from now, rather than on the immediate agenda.
It was never addressed, ma'am, that's my point. The emails are sent out, it would be nice to get an email reply. And it was sent out to all five of the committee members on the city council, and not one took the, took the courtesy. I don't have all this time, I am an international pilot, I'm not retired, I'm a full-time resident, I have an irregular schedule, and I had to take four and a half hours of my busy time unpacking to address this concern to the city council, to make them be aware of the discrepancies that you created yourself.
And we apologize.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else, sir? Anything else? Council members?
No.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Hey, Terry, I have a question.